Aaron.
Alrighty, I have four o'clock. How many other board members do we have? I see Sally, Carrie, Lynn, and do we have Sally Brownfield yet?
I have not seen her unless she is the phone number that was dialed in.
That could be. Can you tell if she can hear us on that phone line?
The phone line has disconnected.
Okay, give it a minute, see if it comes back in.
Sandy, I've sent her a text, so we'll see if she gets back to me. She,
Okay.
I don't know if she's having technical difficulties or not.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
Alrighty, we will go ahead and call this study session to order. It is four o'clock. It is July twenty eighth. And we are learning about the reopening of the school plans. So I will, at this time, turn it over to Alex.
Thank you, Sandy, and welcome, everybody. I really appreciate everyone coming together in this study session to review a number of things. I would just like to ask the board a question. You have seen the subcommittee reports, and those reports are fundamental and foundational to the recommendation that we will be making at the board meeting. The plan is very flexible, and it can accommodate the three different phases that you will hear about this afternoon in terms of our reopening plan. So the board, I think, indicated that in the actual board meeting, and of course, this could be a little different in terms of the study session. Do you want us to go through the subcommittee plans again, or do you have specific questions that you want to ask in the study session and at the board meeting? Or would you like our subcommittee leaders to present like they did when we did the more or less of the dress rehearsal? What would be your druthers on that?
What has changed? I saw there was, has there been a change since last week in the plans as presented?
In the subcommittee reports, no, because they're flexible to support any of the options that were, that we've discussed. Other than a little tweaking, they're pretty much what you heard.
Okay. Then I don't know that we need to go in quite as detail as we were last week.
Right.
You know, let's find out what is different and what have, you know, what are, what are contingency plans? There's been a lot in the news since last week about whether or not we can even do face-to-face schools. So what, what contingency plans do we have in place for that as well? So.
Well, we've got two plans that we can discuss during this study session. We have the proposed recommendation to the board, and we have the subcommittee reports that you heard. So we can discuss the subcommittee reports in summary, and then go to what we're going to be discussing at the board meeting in terms of a possible recommendation or a recommendation. Would you like us to move forward on that basis?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. All right. So, and again, our subcommittee leaders, please keep it brief. And if our, I know our board has reviewed those subcommittee reports, and if they have questions, I'm sure they will ask them. And let's start off with, with Kelly. Just a summary, Kelly, of your work.
So the committee for all the polls and the surveys and everything out came to the conclusion that the two-by-two schedule would work for blended, blended model. So it would be half the kids attending on Monday, Tuesday live, the other half attending on Thursday and Friday live, and the days that they aren't there would be online instruction. That's pretty much it in a nutshell, unless we decide to go one hundred percent online, and then there's a different plan for that.
Okay. And one of the things that the board needs to know is that I asked in this past week or so to have the subcommittee leaders check with the over two hundred people that were involved in their work, what they would prefer, whether it be the hybrid model or the online model, and it was the majority, and correct me if I'm wrong here, the majority. A very high majority indicated that, under the circumstances that we're under, they would recommend online distant learning. But on that, we'll kind of continue. Kelly, do you have anything else you want to add?
So I did send out a survey to my folks. I didn't include the board members. I didn't think that that would be appropriate for that, but I did send out a survey. And a hundred percent of my folks said either they would a hundred percent support going online, or that they would probably support going online. There was, there was nobody that said they would not support that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Kelly. Next, Mary Ann and Suzie.
Let's ask real quick if board members have any questions.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me.
First subcommittee. I don't see anybody piping in, so we'll assume there's no questions related to that subcommittee. So next.
Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you, Kelly.
Next, we have our social and emotional needs issue for students, staff, and family. And Mary Ann Marshall and Suzie, where's Vicki? We're chairing that committee. So, Mary Ann?
Thank you, Dr. Apostle. I'll go over the first four, and like we did before, Suzie will go over the last four. So as we said before, we want to make sure that we identify the supports and make them easily accessible so that our families don't have to wonder where to get the information or who to reach out to. And I know Katie has been working on that right now as well. We want to make sure that we have our information out early to our stakeholders in regards to what school would look like in the fall. We want to make sure that this is on a routine basis, so there's some predictability around when information is going to be shared. We want to create an advisory committee that includes students, families, districts, tribes, and Mason County agencies that help to support the social and emotional wellness for all. And so right now, our social emotional committee is turning into that advisory board, and we've already reached out to doctors and counselors within the community, and we are getting those people on board to create this advisory committee. So that's moving forward. And then number four, create time and space for breaks in the school day for students and staff. So that would be to accommodate hand washing, issues around mask wearing, longer passing breaks, et cetera. So those are our first four recommendations.
The next ones include some work that would happen within the building teams. Number five talks about a coordination with our already established MTSS teams and leadership teams and working with the principals to make sure that our reentry is trauma-responsive and universally informed based on the practices that have happened that are best practice from coming back from a situation like this. Some of the buildings have programs that are already in place, and a couple others would need to do some work around that. Means that each building would have an action plan, they'd have trainees and reminders for their staff, and that we would also be working to address staff wellness and resilience in stressful situations. We talked a lot about what it means also as a building-based implementation plan, the contemporary cultural competence that's embedded in building practices as we return, that that's important no matter which platform we're at. It's a, it's time to do that work, but this is something we don't want to leave behind. Especially with the counselors group, recently, we've been talking about what the screener would look like for all students to inform who's in need of tier two or three, so medium or more intensive services that are needed for students, whether those are social, emotional, or academic. We've talked a lot about creating ways to support resilience in our community. We should be, we should be doing these screeners on a regular basis as, as time changes, no matter what's process we're using. And again, the counselors have been working, doing some work around some of that piece. We want to work even more intentionally and embedded with our MTSS teams, with the school counselors. So Alex has been able to help us get some time together. We're on, we've done our three days, we're headed into our fourth day of creating the template of the American School Counselors Association counseling programs that are both flexible in nature but responsive in our services and tied with our MTSS committees. Those are things that we should be doing anyway, but that social emotional needs coming back post-quarantine still in a pandemic, our needs are not going to get any smaller. So we better get more coordinated and more flexible in our delivery model.
Thank you, Suzie. Good work, very good work. And I know we're summarizing here for the sake of time. But as you can hear, board members, this is a plan that could be implemented regardless of what direction we go. If we start with, let's say we start with online, and then something happens in a very positive way that we can do Phase Two, you'll hear about where it's a hybrid model. We can adjust the work that you're hearing about very, very easily. Questions from the board?
Looking here, I don't see anybody yet.
Questions from me at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Alrighty, looks like we can move on to the next subcommittee.
Very good. Next committee is safety and security, and that's with Robert Heron and Karen D. Witt. Robert?
Good evening, or I guess it's afternoon. Our committee met over a period of seven weeks. We had members from many health professionals and safety professionals from Mason General Hospital, Mason County Health Services, Mason County Emergency Management, City of Shelton, Shelton Police, Mason County Sheriff's Office. We also had the SD one thirteen. We had administrators, teachers, paras, custodians, head custodians. So we had a very nurses, school nurses. We had a very diverse group that was, you know, professionals in, in their field that would to help us to work on the specificity of the safety and security subcommittee's work. We broke down the work into fifteen tasks and made recommendations for drills and emergency evacuation, hand washing stations, staff lounges, workrooms, and shared areas, temporary signage, open houses and campus orientations, libraries, assemblies, field trips, choir and band, after-hours facility usage, PPE usage by students and staff, daily screening requirements in order to facilitate screening of every staff and student and visitor that comes into any of our buildings, return to school after COVID illness or positive COVID results, physical distancing in classrooms and lunchrooms and throughout campuses, and then ultimately washing and disinfecting campuses. Since the initial report was presented to the school board, we've had some meetings that have started to take place on between facilities and administrators trying to implement all the recommendations from this committee's work and how that would go about being done, and the difficulties specifically when it relates to the screening process and how to handle students that, that are, that do not pass the screening procedures and how to work with getting them picked up for, from their parents as well as keeping them, you know, apart from the population until a parent pick up and a lot of the logistics involved with that. We also went back and had a meeting afterwards with our subcommittee to pose the question about their feelings about if we were to go to an online model to start, and we had a hundred percent agree to the, to supporting the decision, if that's the route that was going to be, the route that was taken. And we had about ninety-four percent that agreed in theory that that was absolutely the best way to receive, given the, all the circumstances that are involved with opening schools.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I'll go ahead and start off with one. We were, we were discussing some options for helping to clean, like the fogger, and wondered what limitations there are with the fogger and any information about sanitizing, sterilizing with UV light? Is there any limitations or restrictions on using UV light?
So in this instance, I'm kind of wearing two hats as a, as a, the, the subcommittee leader for the health and safety, and then I'm also the facilities director, of course. So there's not a recommendation that came down specifically from the subcommittee related to using things like foggers and UV light. So that was not, that was not developed or, because the recommendations that, that we received from Mason County Health Department and from the State Department of Health and from, and CDC recommendations, we, the current cleaning standards, materials, and liquids, and everything that the Mason, or the Shelton School District already does meets those. It's only specific to areas and frequency that only needed to be adjusted. So, so we did not go into that as part of the subcommittee's work. I can say as the facilities director, we'll look at anything and every tool necessary that will be helpful to the process after the final determination is made from the school board with approval. I do, I can say that I know that the operations subcommittee did look at foggers specifically related to transportation. I think that Brenda will go over some of that specifically with her presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from school board members?
Okay.
I see none, so we'll go ahead and move on.
Okay, I just have a question for Mary Ann and Suzie. Did you, by chance, and maybe you mentioned this and I missed it, when I asked for you to kind of check out your subcommittee members as to the model that they would support, if they would be interested in an online model? Did you mention that, Mary Ann? And if you did, I.
Yes, I, yes, Suzie and I did. We did a poll at our last subcommittee meeting this last Thursday, and ninety-four percent of my, of Suzie and I's subcommittee said that they would support going online at the beginning of the school year.
Okay, thank you. Next, Brenda, and excuse me here, we kind of jumped around a little bit. Operations, transportation, and nutrition, please.
Thank you. That's okay, because I, a lot of what we're doing on our committee goes right behind what Robert does on his safety committee, so that kind of flows. So nothing has really changed with food services. There are no new waivers that have been approved by USDA. So we are still going to be doing the grab-and-go meals. More and more vendors are coming forward with higher costs. Catherine and I were talking this morning about that. They're just jumping out of the woodwork right now. One of our challenges will be to limit and do social distancing in the cafeterias. There really is not enough room to do it with the current number of lunches we have now, so we will need to look at expanding lunches if we do the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday model. Also, Robert, we're working with him on hand washing stations because the students are supposed to wash their hands before and after their meals per the guidelines. We also still have to do the point-of-sale, which Catherine explained to you last week, means you have to enter every single student's number. We can't do it the way we're doing it now, so even if we provide meals on the off days for the students, we'll be having to enter it by their number, so that's going to be a challenge for us. But our model is very flexible, and they've been doing it, like we said, since March thirteenth, and they know what works and what doesn't, so we're pretty confident with food services. The bus drivers, we do have our plan there. We are looking at buying foggers for the buses to do the sanitation. That's been a recommendation that came down from OSPI and the Health Department, so we believe that's the best route to go. They'll be doing deep cleaning if we do the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday model on the Wednesdays of their buses. And then I, the big concern with the drivers, I have three on my committee and a mechanic, is that we aren't screening the students before they come on the bus. They're very concerned about their safety and the student's safety. So that is a big concern. I did contact my whole committee, and everyone at this point in time with the way things are going would prefer to go online. They are very concerned about the safety of our staff and students at this point in time.
Thank you very much, Brenda. Okay, next, the sports school curriculum PK twelve, Trevor and Mark. Or, excuse me, does, does the board have any questions?
I have none. I don't see anybody else preparing to speak, so we'll assume no. Move on to the next one.
Thank you. Okay, Trevor and Mark, sports curriculum program.
We've met over the last eight weeks, at least once a week, sometimes twice a week. We've had thirty members. When we did our little survey, two of our members were against full online, the rest were fine with it. We put together specific guidelines for when athletes and students are on campus for facilities and sport-specific activities for each sport. We plan on following the four seasons that were presented by the WIAA. Fall being starting on September seventh, cross-country, boys tennis and boys golf. The athletic trainer will screen all coaches as they come onto campus. The coaches will then screen the athletes before they practice for their specific sports. One hundred percent of the coaches said they would come back and coach. None of them had any issues coming back to campus at all. And we were going to work with facilities to make sure that all areas as far as locker rooms and other areas that the athletes use will be cleaned every day. The last thing as well is we do not know about girls swimming yet. That is a Health Department decision to see if we are allowed to use our swimming pool.
Thank you, Trevor. Mark, does Mark have any comments?
Yeah, just really one. If we go to the online distance learning option, we feel like it's very important that we be able to follow the WIAA rules and allow our sports to continue. I think that's very important for our kids and our community.
Thank you, Mark. I support that. Any questions for Trevor or Mark?
Have none, and I don't see anybody preparing.
I'll make a comment. I just want to say that I would support that as well, too. I hope that if we do have the decision to go to all online, that we would be able to do these small groups and allow our students to still participate in the athletics with the safety guidelines being followed. I was in a Board of Health meeting this morning. It was just a regular Board of Health meeting, nothing that was special that was called. And they were saying, Dr. Stein and, and Dr. Apostle, you may know more about this or what may be coming in the future, but he was saying that the health departments may be taking a greater role in some of the guidelines that are going to be put forth. He said they would be working with OSPI and that these might actually, I'm not sure if they would be more stringent or, or what they would potentially be, but I know that there may be some changes that might come forward from the Department of Health locally and statewide.
I would agree with that. That's what I've been hearing, but we'll have to, I guess, wait and see.
But I, I just want to say that if we're not in a stay-at-home order, I do hope that we would be able to continue to allow, I think it's very important for our kids to be able to participate in some of these smaller settings where you can have safe, safety followed and, and allow them to continue with that. I think that's important as well.
Very important, very important. Any other questions from the board, comments?
I just wanted a clarification. I think I heard one thing and wrote something different down. Trevor, what was it again with the support for being either on campus or full online?
So in our, at our committee, there was two people that were against going full online out of the thirty. But one hundred percent of our coaches that I asked would come back to campus and coach. So I didn't want to confuse you there, so.
Great.
I, we do have some coaches that are a little older, and we do have some coaches that have some health conditions. I spoke to them. They all feel comfortable coming back as far, and following the guidelines.
Great. Yeah.
Good, good clarifying.
Yeah, I really, personally, I think that in a smaller setting like the sports activities and with the full support of those parents who have students participating, at least we can have something.
Right. We're hoping.
Was there an assessment where activity, when you say a hundred percent of the coaches, did that also include coaches or advisors for activities other than the athletics?
So, yeah, advisors also want to have meetings as well, and they would have to follow the same guidelines set for by the athletic teams, and they would also have to be approved ahead of time. So they're working on, right now, we're doing a timeline. And I specifically asked if that, for the activities, the days of weeks they want, would want to meet. And what we want to do is create a timeline for activities so that we don't have too many kids that are in multiple ones. If, if they are, they can do it and not interfere with other activities. So there's like ROTC. They would still be able to do some practicing. There's robotics. So there's a lot of activities that could still come on campus as long as they follow the guidelines, and they got approved by the board ahead of time.
And what about something singing or musical?
Again, they would have to follow the guidelines, and that would be, they would have to remain outside and maintain the six-feet-distance, and all those sports and activities, you know, would be approved ahead of time.
Alrighty. Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next subcommittee. Thank you, Trevor and Mark.
Will, thank you, Sandy. We'll go to our sixth subcommittee, and that's Communications, Public Relations with, with Katie.
So when I asked my subcommittee if they'd support opening schools one hundred percent online, majority agreed that they would support that. In summary, our subcommittee is going to collaborate closely with all of the other subcommittees to communicate with our stakeholders, the happenings in Shelton School District. We'll use the, we'll use multiple communication channels and use the preferred methods for English and non-English speaking families. There, sorry, there will be a webpage established for all of the reopening of schools information, and that will be the hub for all of our information that will be sent out through other communication channels. And we'll utilize Google Classroom, our resources on wheels, or Row School Bus to reach our rural families and community stakeholders to help spread the word. In summary, without getting into detail.
Questions from the board for Katie?
Okay, I don't see anybody preparing to speak, so we'll go ahead and thank Katie for that, and I think we're ready for the next subcommittee.
Yes, and the last one is a Policy Review and Reform Committee to Accommodate a Transitional Model. That meeting will be called either August seventeenth or eighteenth, especially once we determine our approach to reopening our schools. And hopefully that will, will happen very, very soon. So there you've heard a.
Can you give me those dates again, August?
Either August seventeenth or eighteenth, and I will send out a, an invitation to those people that are interested, that have been interested. I will send that early on to them so that they can prepare for the meeting. Of course, we'll look at, at the model that we're going to utilize to reopen schools. We'll look at, review policy as it currently stands to see if we need to make any changes, and then we would be working with our attorneys very closely in terms of any adjustments that we may, would, that we would make in terms of policy.
I have some overall questions. None of them pertain to just one committee. And as we have looked at this from just one committee standpoint, another committee standpoint, I'm concerned that we haven't looked at the overall picture and how they all work together. I'm concerned that we are.
I'm concerned that we are going into this year with the requirements of the same number of days, the same number of minutes, the same number of seat time. And I'm wondering how we're going to do this. If the scenario we got was the children will get off the buses and then get screened. It'll take up to ninety minutes, maybe more, to screen them before they get in the building. So what's that transition look like from five, six, seven hundred kids outside, getting them into a building? What's happening in that transition time? That's taking that much time away from teaching and learning. So I have those kinds of questions. I guess other questions like we heard before about so many lunches at the high school. We just built a gym at the high school that we never used, had before. So why can't we use that? And, you know, that's when we have gone through this in these individual separate committees and then, but we're not looking at the whole picture. It's brought up a lot more questions to me. It's because yeah, we're all, we're talking about everybody being in the same space, but I'm concerned because some of the questions I got last time, too, was, don't worry about that. That's in the details. Well, those details are the ones that could really trip us up in meeting those requirements that we have.
Well, there's no question that the logistics of bringing students back to school in any fashion, face-to-face, are very difficult. But if you really take a look at the work that the subcommittees have completed, it is highly integrated. And when we go through a proposed recommendation that I'm going to make to the board, you will see that the criteria that these various subcommittees put together flow very nicely into the different phases that we're going to talk about here shortly. But I agree with you, Sandy. There are many questions, and there are many questions at the federal level, at the state level, the local level that are unanswered at this time. I was in a meeting with Superintendent Reichdahl just before this one, and there are many unanswered questions. And he basically talked about funding, and we don't know exactly where we're at on funding. He talked about transportation and the fact that if we were to go to any hybrid model or distant learning model, we would have to really take a look at our transportation budget and the employees that we have, that we've hired in a traditional model and how that differs. So some of the same things that you're bringing up, Sandy, are on everybody's mind, and there's no quick answer. There's no simple answer to them. And I think that's what's leading me and the people I represent towards the recommendation that you'll be hearing about shortly. But there's, there's no question, this is a very, very complex issue for everybody, for parents, for educators, for students, for the state government, the federal government. But, you know, in the Shelton School District, since the very beginning of this pandemic, I have, I have made it a priority to say that the safety and health of our people, our families, our students and our staff is of paramount importance. And so I really, I believe in the work that the subcommittees have done, and it will really show through as we progress into the next part of our meeting this afternoon. But, you know, this, this subcommittee plan that has been put together, we have not shared that with anybody yet. We hope to share it after tonight, along with our recommendation. So this is a fifty-one-page document, a tremendous amount of work by two hundred-plus people. And it's very specific and detailed. If we were to go to an online model, this, it would have to be tweaked a little, not much, because it's very flexible and it pertains to any situation in terms of how we would bring students back, students and staff back to school. I really believe that the work that the subcommittees did is exactly what we needed, and there is a correlation between their work. As you'll see when I explain the recommendation I would like to put forward to the board.
And I thank Sally for that question. Did you have a follow-up at all? Sally, I see you still have your mic on.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay.
It was a very good question, an important question, but, you know, there are still unanswered questions.
Then the work that is being done, regardless of what reopening plan we go with, it's not lost work. It's not wasted work. It's work that needs to be done because sooner or later we will be going back to school in a blended model. You know, whether that's September or sometime during the year or whatever. I mean, this is all work that needs to be done and questions and discussions that need to be asked and had. So, you know, it's valuable information
Yes.
as we go forward.
Oh, I'm not saying that any of that, this is lost. I think it's, I think regardless of how we're going forward, this only strengthens our programs. We've taken all this time out to really examine all the different areas. And, yeah, it's taken a lot of work and it's only going to, I think, however we go forward, strengthen our district and our programs.
But, you know, Sally, you brought up a very important point, and so did Sandy, but, you know, regardless of the time and effort, more than likely, regardless of how we bring our kids back to school, we're probably going to have to adjust it and monitor it and refine it. There's no, there's no doubt about that in our minds for sure. But I believe for the time that we've had to put the plans together, I think that the staff did, really, in my opinion, because I've stayed close to all of it. It's pretty miraculous with everything else that's going on around us.
I listened to five different school districts today.
Yeah, so you know what I'm talking about.
Talking about their plans and, yeah, which way they're going and, and it's from all over the state, and so everybody has different needs.
That's right. Yeah.
I mean, one of them had ten teachers that have the virus themselves.
Wow.
Yeah, and how they're dealing with it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's very difficult. So this fifty-one-page document will be put online for our community to take a look at, along with, if in fact the board approves the recommendation, that will also be online as of tomorrow. Now, here's a couple of things I want to share with you, if you would allow me, in terms of this model that we're going to share with you. Here is the rationale. Number one, and very, very important. You know, a lot of people talk about the health and safety of their people, of their students, of their families. But we've been saying that for a long time in the Shelton School District, that the safety and health of our students, our staff, our families is of paramount importance. And that, that rings clear, I know, in the board's ears and in the people I work with. So that was a big factor in terms of coming forward with this plan for you to consider. The second thing that came into play was a relatively short timeline to prepare for the absolute safety of our students and our staff. You know, we're about thirty days away from school starting. So that was a real issue. The uncertainty of the virus, it's dynamic. We don't know what we don't know in relation to the virus. I remember people talking probably three months ago that people were awaiting the summer because they felt that in warm weather, the virus would be subdued. Well, you and I both know that's not happening. And that's something that we really don't know where this virus is going to go, how it's going to affect people. It's affecting younger people, young kids, older people. I mean, it's all over the place. So that uncertainty really worried us. Our budget, and Brenda, maybe you can help me with this. It really hasn't been communicated, other than the fact that they've said we're going to receive ninety-seven percent of our funding. The levy has not been discussed at this point, at least I haven't heard anything about it. And the cares money is starting to flow. I heard that today from Superintendent Reichdahl that we're going to start receiving funding for cares. It's not, we're not getting everything right now, but there'll be money available for our staff in terms of professional development, which is a real positive. And you mentioned this, Sandy, that the difficult logistics that are involved in a hybrid model of any kind, the screening, the food service, the transportation and safety protocols, the accuracy of the safety protocols, and who's going to be accountable to make sure that those tests and that screening that you do is accurate. All you have to do is think about somebody coming through and not being diagnosed, and we are in serious trouble. So what we're doing with this plan that we're going to propose, and we'll get into it in just a minute, is we're also buying time to see where this virus is going and to prepare our school district for the time that when school begins in earnest, to the point where we're implementing a hybrid model, we will be more than ready. So the logistics are a real problem. The professional development for our teachers and for all staff, classified and certified, making sure that they're ready to deal with this uncertainty that we've never faced before. And we've got thirty days to prepare them. You know, the summer has been the summer. It's flown by for everybody. Everybody's trying to take a day here or a day there to rest. But to be honest, not many people have rested during the summer. Staffing issues. Right now, and I've got to be real honest with everybody here, we don't know how many of our teachers are ready to come back, whether they have symptoms of some kind that we don't know about yet. So that's an issue that we need to deal with. The issue of equity and accountability and the fact there's no vaccine available. And when you listen to Dr. Fauci, he's talking about December, January for a vaccine. I entrust in him. So that's some of the rationale that's going to lead us to the discussion of our recommendation. The key points of the recommended plan are that it maintains, again, the health and safety of everybody. At the same time, the plan is flexible, and we will provide support in this plan for students, families and staff with special circumstances. If we need to bring some kids back to school because of special needs, or the family has special circumstances, we're going to be prepared, and that's what we're going to do in the month of August. That was the plan. We developed the plan in July, and we fine-tune it and support it in August. Well, we know that families are going to have tough times, and we know that students are going to have a difficult challenge. We're going to be there to help them to the best of our ability within social distancing and doing things appropriately as it relates to safety. But we've got to be there for our kids and for our families, even if it is a hundred percent online program. I've asked, and I think maybe you've heard this, that we will monitor our efforts online every two weeks or sooner, if need be, and make adjustments as necessary. You know, if the virus for some reason, and I'm hoping, regresses, that will be a signal to us to move to the next phase. And we want our kids in school, believe me, but we want our kids and our staff to be safe. We want our principals, assistant principals, counselors, nurses, everyone, bus drivers, food service people. We want everybody at work, but we want people to be safe. You know, I lay awake at night thinking about these things. And, you know, all it would take is one student death or one staff dying. And I thought about that from this virus. From the virus, I know that we're susceptible to dying for a number of reasons, every one of us. But if it's because of the virus, that would be very difficult for me as your superintendent to take. I want to do everything we can to support our families, and we will, and to support our students and to support our staff. Their health is number one. Number one. Because all we need is a death. And then all of a sudden, we're looking at each other, and we, we say we could have, we would have, and so on. It's too late. I'd rather be on the safe side to start off with. Monitor the situation closely, support our people, our staff, support them, support our kids, support our families to the best of our ability, and monitor the situation very, very closely. And if we see an opening and we feel secure, we move towards that. But from what I'm hearing, the governor is going to be making some decisions here shortly. But you know what? I think I sent something from a Shelton High School teacher, it came unannounced to me today. And how proud, how proud he was of the things that are going on in Shelton and that we are leaders. And is there a risk to support the recommendation we're going to make? Absolutely. Is there a risk to go a different direction? Absolutely. There's no real popular one hundred percent support, folks. It's not going to happen. If we went to a hybrid model, we would get complaints. If we went online, we're going to get complaints. If we said we're going to come bring our kids back to school, people would look at us and say, what are they thinking? So what we're advocating and what I'm recommending, based on what I've just mentioned to you, is that we start, we start one hundred percent online, and I'm asking each school to take a good look at their, at their student profile and their students that need extra help and families that need extra help. And we, as professional educators, need to rally to the best of our ability to support those special circumstances. And I can assure you, our staff is prepared to do that. I know our staff. They've got a big heart, just like our community does. And when, when people express that they have a problem, that the parents are working and there's nobody at home, we're going to have to make adjustments within the safety and health guidelines. But we, as a school district, will do that. It's not going to just say we're going to go a hundred percent online and forget our families and forget our staff and forgive, forget our students. We're not going to do that. That's not the model. So before I go any further, I just want you to know, we've been spending tremendous, a tremendous amount of time talking about the issues that I just brought up. I've talked with every principal, every assistant principal, every cabinet member. It goes on and on and on to get their opinion on what we should do. This, this decision was not made or a recommendation, I should say. It's not a decision. It, I did not come forward with this recommendation in an isolated sense. I asked a lot of questions. I pushed people to give me their, their heart on the issues, and they did. And that's why I feel comfortable coming forward with this recommendation. And if you don't have any questions at this time, I would like to screenshot the plan that I'm hoping you had a chance to look at that we sent to you. the plan that I'm hoping you had a chance to look at that we sent to you as board members this morning. No one else has seen the plan. But this plan, if it's approved by you, will go out tomorrow morning along with the subcommittee plan. So here is the two thousand twenty twenty-one school year learning models. A reminder, the plan will be initiated on August first. This is if the board sees fit to do this. Two thousand twenty with the direction to fine tune the Shelton School District's plan to meet the specific needs of each school within a highly collaborative process. And we mean that. So August will be the month, if we get approval, to refine and make sure that we truly support our families, students and staff under any and all circumstances. You know, let's say that we have X number of kids coming back for legitimate reasons. As professional people, we've got to figure it out, folks, and we're going to have empty buildings so we can spread those kids apart in terms of social distancing. And we'll have the PPEs and we'll do the very best we can for those kids that fall into, those kids and families that fall into those special circumstances. So Phase one is one hundred percent. Let's go back up, please. Phase one is one hundred, thank you. Phase one, one hundred percent online learning model. Phase two, online and in person, that's the hybrid. Phase three is the traditional model, one hundred percent face to face. Shelton School District's current plan, recommendation is to open in phase one. So go down a little bit there. Okay, and this is real important. Phase one, in light of the increase of positive COVID cases in our community, Shelton School District will open with online instruction for all students. The decision to move to phase two will be based on COVID data and support from our local health jurisdictions and school board. The model will be one hundred percent learning, a one hundred percent online learning model. The grade level will be PK twelve. The schedule. Students will walk through a robust and well-articulated online curriculum taught by Shelton School District staff. Grading, feedback, active instruction and daily attendance are part of this structure. This is one hundred percent online with no in-person classes. The Superintendent Reichdahl, Dana Anderson, the ESD Superintendent, and I've heard it from members of the state board. We cannot replicate what we did in the spring. That is not negotiable. This has to be a full-blown, highly articulated online learning model. And I believe strongly that our staff, our teachers, our classified staff will come through and make this happen. Support for all students and families. The school district will work with families, and this is extremely important. The school district will work with families and students on a case-by-case basis to address any challenges or special circumstances. We will continue to offer support through school district programs, including but not limited to English learners, Native American education programs, McKinney Vento, our family support services and all other state and federal programs. And basically, that's reiterating what I said just a few minutes ago, that working with families, that's a professional responsibility we have. And I believe strongly that we will step up to the plate and do what is necessary. Okay, Kelly, can we go back down? I mean, back up again? Okay. All right, go ahead. Face-to-face instruction, no face-to-face instruction. Support may be provided face-to-face on a case-by-case basis. We keep repeating that because we we know that we are going to have situations where we have to be very flexible. There's no black and white. There's gray. And as a great school system, we will deal with the gray. And the gray is individual situations that families and students and staff face. It'll be one hundred percent online through K-12, a company dedicated to online learning. Now, all of you and I know that, you know, people will say, well, there's a better program. And we know this program is this, this program is that. We have researched this and we believe that this is the best way to go, a way that provides consistency for our staff, consistency for our students, consistency for our parents. Very important at this point in time. Role of Shelton School District, Shelton School District staff. Our staff will teach using the robust and interactive curriculum supplied by K-12. Okay? All right, this next area is very important, and this is where the school will step in when there's a need. Parents and guardians are the education partners for their children or child. After receiving instruction online, the student will need to complete activities at home that may require support from their education partner. Parents and guardians will have access to online guidance and materials, including evening hours for support. Would you comment on that, please, Kelly?
Sorry, I had to figure out unmute. Yes, there's a support within the program for the parents. There are a lot of online tutorials, things like that. But we also have the idea of offering some stipends or additional work for some teachers to take nighttime hours. So that parents can call in on a set schedule, come in on a video session. Students can get work. For instance, if I'm a math teacher, Alex and I are both math teachers, we might work together. I take Monday, Wednesday, he takes Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday. And we have open session from seven to eight, where parents can zoom in and get help with their math questions. So those are the things that we're really, I'm pretty excited about and I really feel like they will make a difference for us and set us apart and help our parents.
Thank you, thank you, Kelly. And the thing is, you know, this is where we talk about being a community. This is truly an opportunity for us to continue the great collaboration and heart that Shelton and the Shelton School District have. This is where we need to have empathy for one another and help each other and look at things differently and walk in other people's shoes. That's empathy. And reach out to people that are having trouble. And we need to survey people on a regular basis. I'm talking about sending surveys out every two weeks to make sure that things are working for them. And if they're not working for them, then we need to make adjustments in our system to support them in terms of equity of education and accountability. I'm going to be real clear, and I plan on addressing the entire staff about the things that I'm talking about. But of course, I can't do anything until this is the direction we determine we need to go.
Alex, can I ask a question or do you want me to save my questions to Lynn?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, Lynn.
So this is really the area that I keep kind of getting hung up on. And I know part of it is because we've spent a lot of time planning for this blended model, which I agree with Sandy and Sally both, that that work is not lost. We're going to have to use that, you know, template for when we do come back. If we decide to go a hundred percent online, we're going to use that template. But I think where I'm really lost is on this hundred percent online model. You know, there was a lot of scrutiny over how things will happen in the spring. Nobody had ever had to do that and transition like that. Nobody really knew what we needed to be doing. There were not a set of standards that people had to follow. And I get that this K-12 has those standards. But I guess when you're talking about, originally when we were talking about having a blended model where we would have some parents choose to do the online and other parents choose to do the partial in-class. I can see where this parent being the education partner was more critical because our teachers wouldn't have the time. But now that we're doing, if we go one hundred percent online, is it realistic to expect our parents to be the only education partner? I feel like our parents, our teachers would have more time on their hands if they're doing a hundred percent online, that the expectation would be that they were available normal school hours. And that wouldn't necessarily all fall on the parents. But maybe I'm, I think I have more questions around how does K-12 work than
Well.
You know what I mean?
I see where you're coming from, Lynn. And you see, once we know what our funding is, the way we do our work within our staff may change. If we can keep everybody on board, this is where our classified staff and our certified staff can work together to deal more specifically with what you're concerned about and what we're all concerned about. Making sure that we support our parents. It might be in the evening, it might be during the day. But this is where paraeducators who are very qualified to assist us and teachers, we can work together with the parents to determine what is it that you need? And why is it that you need it? And we'll see what we can do to provide it. But the support system in relation to an online system that we're going to create, I think it's going to work extremely well. Because we've got good people that I know will jump to the chance to help parents and families that are in a difficult position. And we may have more than we think, and so be it if that's the case. The other side of this is what we're advocating is this is the way we would like to begin school. There's, it may turn out to be absolutely the smartest thing we've ever done if in fact the virus continues at its current pace and gets worse. It's a very dynamic virus, you know, it crosses borders quickly and things change quickly. But let's say things get better. We can move to phase two. And if they get much better, we can move to phase three with the same kind of supports. Because what we're talking about is a different system of teachers and staff working with parents. This is creating a different picture, a different dynamic for the future, where we will be working more closely than ever before with parents and families.
I think that, you know, I think it would be helpful for the community just to understand. And I know Kelly kind of explained this, you know, in our last meeting where we were going through the subcommittee things. But I think it would be helpful for the community to really understand what does that one hundred percent online day look like for their child? I mean, are they going to get, you know, a half an hour session with their teacher and then they're on their own for the day? Or is it throughout the day that teacher's popping in and touching base? I think those kinds of questions are out there. I think we need to be prepared to answer those. And I have total faith that our teachers are up for this challenge and that they've set the bar very high. I think that is just one of those things I think would be helpful in communicating. And I know, and maybe we're not ready to get to that detail. Maybe that's what we spent August getting to. But it's just definitely that question that's still looming for me is what does that day look like for the student?
Yes, and I think that's very important information that we need to share. We'll probably, we could put something out almost immediately. But I would like to refine it a bit, but not take too long to do that because I think that's a legitimate question. We need to define what that school day looks like online. Kelly, your thoughts?
Yeah, can I pop in, Lynn? I might be able to help a little bit. Per Chris Reichdahl, and it's actually the right thing to do. Every student and every teacher has to have a schedule for the whole day. So there will be periods where the teachers will be active and online that will be put out. I agree, they will have more time in the day depending on what they're teaching. So as an elementary teacher, I might have four things, social studies, science, language arts and math. So I may have done some preloading on one of those classes. I have another set schedule later in the day to check in with math, do a preteach or reteach and that. So yes, they will have a day built and they'll be actually able to see it online. The principals and I met with the K-12 folks today and they get a whole schedule.
I don't know what those are either.
They can look on there and they know exactly what's happening. Our challenge is going to be kind of staggering that throughout the day, especially at the elementary, so that there's no overlapping for the kids. And that we're not pulling all the bandwidth down at the same time, which is an issue. But we will definitely have those supports around and then let them know what that looks like. I feel like, as Alex said, we have a pretty solid start with all of our, I'll call them auxiliary people, but they're really not. Like our EL paratex, our Native American paratex, our EAs, our lab and title teachers, they'll all be assigned roles to support this and to be able to meet with parents and kids at different times. So I know that we don't have a big beautiful schedule, but we don't want to put that out yet. Because we haven't agreed to this yet. So as soon as we get there, we'll work on those details and each school is going to have a little bit of a different flavor to it.
Thanks.
However, we will have some consistency across the board.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And I think just even saying that much to the community will help ease some of those concerns of what that would look like. So I appreciate that insight. Thanks.
We also, just to give everybody a little bit of insight too, we don't have to follow the K-12 program step by step. Our teachers can add or take away from what is there. So if they don't want the kids to be assigned all twelve lessons that are going to take six hours for that day, they can cut it down to four and then add, you know, a story or something like that where they're working with the kids directly too. So it's kind of the best of both worlds. We just have to set our parameters.
You know, and at the same time, but thank you for bringing that up, Lynn, very important. And we will clarify and refine as soon as possible for the families and for the staff and for everyone. You know,
A minute. So piggybacking on that, let's take the example of a high school student. Previously, they would get a schedule of what their day and what their week was going to look like. So they would still get a schedule on the online model. It may vary a little bit from the schedule that they had or were accustomed to in prior years, but they would still have a schedule, correct?
A hundred percent, yes.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments from the board, Sandy?
Does not appear so. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, actually, sorry, I was trying to unmute myself and wasn't being successful with that. I just, I agree with what Lynn is saying. I think there needs to be more information for the parents. I'm getting a ton of questions around that because I have kids in school and people know that. They want to know what this looks like. And the other thing that needs to be discussed is whether or not there is flexibility to people's day. Because if you have two working parents and they cannot help during the day, can they do that at different times, like in the afternoon and evenings when they're done with work? So those are going to be the things that families are going to ask as well as what does the day look like? Is there flexibility? How am I going to do this when you have kids by yourself or you have two working parents and can that be shifted and moved to times that accommodate them?
And I think that's what I was referring to, Carrie, a very good point. We can't have a system at this time that's black and white. We will have to adjust school days. We will have to adjust our responsibilities. And I have faith in our staff that we will do that. We need to do what we need to do in these very unique times and we'll be ready to do that. What we need is for this model, if it were approved by the board, we want it to be extremely successful for the time that it's in place. I will also say that very quickly that I entrust in the creativity and innovation of our teachers. The curriculum is, the K-12 curriculum will provide consistency. But at no time will it impinge on academic freedom, creativity and innovation. Our teachers are doing that every day with the board-approved curriculum. And I would not anticipate them changing in terms of how creative they are. We might have to be more creative than ever before at this point in time, and I entrust in our teachers and our staff to do that.
Carrie, that's part of what I'm preparing for right now too, is to be able to help with that situation. Um, the, the rate at what the kids, at which the kids do the pieces that they do at home, they can totally do that at any time. They don't have set schedules. There will be some set schedules with the teachers, you know, presenting to the kids and having that, but. I also am hoping and pretty sure we can pull this off, that we can take, that we can record those at the same time. So that the kids can, can access them later.
Yeah, thank you Kelly, I think that's just going to be very important to communicate. I think especially in the beginning, I appreciate Dr. Apostle's words about having empathy and sympathy. I, as a parent going through all of this, I've been digesting all of this information and getting myself prepared for it. But we have to realize our families may be hearing some of this. Um, for the first time, they may be holding on to hope that this was not going to be the case. And that can cause a lot of different emotions. I'm seeing it. Just with some of the questions and reactions that I'm getting from people that I know with children in school, and so I think that. You know, just being calm and sympathetic and empathetic and getting out as much of the information as we can. Um, and communicating that often is going to be important.
Yes, I agree Carrie, early and often, and that's what August is going to be all about, and August is just right around the corner. Let me tell you that, um, one moment please. I have a quick story to tell. I'm very empathetic about our families and our children. I look back when I was growing up, I could not speak the language, I could not speak English. My mother couldn't speak English. My dad was a laundry driver, working hard to put food on the table. And if somebody would have came forward with a, something different and new, other than the traditional model, even when I was in elementary school. And not understanding English, it would have been absolutely devastating. For our family, for me and my brothers. So I have deep empathy for our families regardless of the circumstances that this may create. And I can assure you, based on conversations that I've had just recently with our leaders. They're going to make this work. They're going to make this happen. And our teachers are going to make it happen, and our classified staff's going to make it happen. My job is to make sure that we are totally with our families and our students and our staff. And I guarantee you, I'm going to be real clear in terms of expectations to support our families. And what needs to happen, and we may have to do things completely different than we've ever done them before. But that's our job as professional people to support our community and to support our children and to support our families. I know what it's like to be poor and not speak the language and to be in a different culture altogether. But then there's other family circumstances that you and I are both aware of, that I won't bring up. That we need to rally to the occasion. We must rally to the occasion to make this work. Even if we were to go to a hybrid model, we would have the same issues. But the only difference would be, would, we would be preparing for two different models. Again, what this course of action that we're taking, it may not be for very long. Or it might be for a long time, we don't know yet. But we're not going to take any chances on people's lives and health. So you can be rest assured that it'll be a top priority to support our families. All right, we'll continue on here, food service. Brenda, can you elaborate a little bit on this, please?
Yep. Um, so in the. Hybrid model, we will be doing grab and go meals for lunch and um, breakfast. We are hoping if we have the screening of the students coming into the buildings for the hybrid model, that we. Could join together there to move it quicker. But for the um, online model totally, we're still working through some pieces to make sure we can get it approved. We believe we can. Um, we want to give parents the option that they can come once a week and get. Five meals at one time, breakfast and lunch for every day, we'll give them preparation instructions if there's something they need to. Heat up, that way they're not having to spend money on gas during this time, that they can just come one day and get the full week. So we're looking at that option. They will be grab and go again, like they are now. Um, the only thing that still has not changed, and I'm hoping that we'll get that waiver put through, is that point of sale. Every student would have to come, it's not like it is now where the parent can come get meals for all their students. Every student would have to come in person if the waiver doesn't go through. So we're hoping that goes away and we'll be back to similar to how we're doing it now. But we'll be providing meals no matter what scenario we do, we've got it figured out, so.
Any, any questions on that particular subject or anything that we've covered to this point? From our school board?
Can I add one little thing I just thought of Alex?
Sure.
You mentioned that um, you know, we will be bringing, potentially have some kids come that need additional help. We are prepared to provide the meals at the school for those students if they come to the school, so.
Sure, very good. Now.
Clarification.
Anything else Sandy, from any of our board members, anything more?
Doesn't look like it.
Are there any, are there any questions uh, so far that people have called in about?
I do not see any questions from the school board.
No, no questions from outside then?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, we'll continue on here. Okay, uh, transport, what's, did we skip one just now? Or is this the, the next one, transportation? Oh yes, okay, transportation would not be applicable uh, with this model, obviously. There might be some, there might be some. Uh, and again, we're ready to do what's necessary to transport students if that's the case. Um, health protocols, um. None at this point in time, unless we bring those students that have special needs, uh, special circumstances. Then we would incorporate um, the same protocols that we would in a face-to-face uh, model. But the safety again, uh, health and safety would be of paramount importance, once we brought those students back to school. We would screen them, uh, and we would do everything that we needed to do to make sure that they were safe. And we provided safety for our staff that would be interfacing with those students. Anything on that one?
Does not appear so, so let's go ahead and proceed.
Okay, thanks. Uh, special education, specifically design instruction for our students will continue, and Jenny. Can you elaborate on that a little, please?
Sure, can y'all see me, okay? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, um, as soon as the decision is made tonight, then our department leaders from each building and our principals will be getting together. To go over specific student needs, and then IEP meetings will happen in August and September to determine what. Other types of services our students might need depending on their IEPs.
Thank you Jenny, and Jenny's doing a fantastic job monitoring uh, everything, including her staff uh, during these difficult times. And the staff uh, from everything I've heard is ready to, to go to do what's necessary for our students and our families.
Yes.
Okay. That's all of phase one. Or we got social, uh, we got technology here, excuse me, technology. A Chromebook will be, will be provided by the district, internet access is needed for online learning. We will continue to work with families to support internet access, and uh, Brenda, can you comment on that? And if Glenn is with us, I, I welcome him also.
I think he is not right now, I think he's coming to the board meeting. Um, but we have been working, um, there was some communication today, and Kelly I believe was involved in it too. That we are looking at purchasing actual hotspots that we can give to specific families. Um, a piece that we're working through, we have a map that shows. How like, I'll use T-Mobile as example, you can buy the hotspot with a year of service. But um, you have to plug in their address to see if they really have access there. So that will be what we will have to do for each individual case, but we are looking at purchasing some of those with the Cares money.
Thank you. The next one, which is extremely support, uh, important and needs to be supported 100%. And that's the social emotional support for our families and our students. Uh, district level resources will be available for students through our website. Distant virtual, social and emotional support for students will be provided by staff and counselors. Uh, Suzie and uh, Mary Ann, could you comment on this please? Cause this is, this is huge.
I can tell you that the counselors have been meeting this past week to talk about what it looks like to move our platform online. I'm sure Mary Ann can fill in more about how that fits with our goals and our targets. Um, we had some questions about what it looks like to move your counseling practice to an online setting. So we'll keep doing that work together through the month of August to see, you know, how, how does that work? Um, I know that there's some conversations about who, people coming back onto campus and being flexible about needs around some of those things. I don't know if that's one of those places that a social emotional support with a counselor might be a conversation around that, but. We'll just be in contact with, um, well, with uh, Mary Ann and with Kelly. And working together to make sure that our full comprehensive plan gets implemented, K-12 in whichever platform. Um, I'm sure our building principals will work with us about how to fit that in our MTSS plans in the rollout, so.
Yeah, I think uh, Suzie, you brought something that's, that's very important. There may be a, a, a need for counselors and teachers and administrators to work with students and with families. In terms of this particular area, and this would require in some instances, really, um, meeting face-to-face possibly. Uh, but that's something that again, uh, we need to incorporate into our planning, which I'm sure you will do that. Um, Mary Ann, anything else?
No, just to concur with Suzie, we're really passionate about providing supports as a district. To our students, our families and our staff. And we're really also passionate about if we can't provide them support because it's outside the realm of what we do as educators. Connecting them to a, a county resource or a local resource that can help them. And I know Suzie and I are, are building our advisory team right now with outside community people. So that we'll be able to have that again, information readily available, a one-stop shop of unit supports. This is where you go to our district website, or here's a flyer to be able to connect our families, our students and our families with. With the needs that they have, whether that's in the district or outside of the district.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a great approach, and I'm sure that you're thinking about all those things, and it's in your plan that I've reviewed. Where we're working with community agencies and it, in more cases than not, it may be the school district and community agencies. Working shoulder to shoulder uh, to remediate some of these uh, issues that may come about. So uh, you're on the right track, absolutely. Uh, is that the last piece of phase one?
Yes, it is.
Okay, can we go to the top again? Okay. So phase two is the remote, uh, that, and this is some of the same information you'll hear throughout phase two. But it's of course abbreviated in terms of the hybrid model. Uh, the district is able to meet health and safety requirements, including screening and social distancing in accordance with state and local guidance. The decision to move back to phase one. Or move forward to phase two or phase three will be based on COVID data and support from our health, local health jurisdiction and school board. Uh, of course, phase two will be a blended model, online and in-person. It'll be K-12. Okay, any questions up to that point from the school board?
Alex, I, I've got a question, and I'm not sure, I, I mean, not, not necessarily based on that. But as, as we're talking about this, we're talking about supports for family and staff and everything, and I'm just wondering. Once we decide on a plan, does that then, is, the way that this works is that, does it then go to the building level? Even if it is all online, and then those principals will be assessing what the needs are of their staff, say if a staff member has. Young students of their own, um, how they can balance teaching as well as having their own. Children having needs because they are in school. Um, or whatever reason, there might need to be an accommodation for a staff member. How, where is that being assessed or in this process?
That's a very good question, and we uh, have uh, dealt with that. Uh, I have asked principals to put a phase two plan together that will incorporate what you've just mentioned. In fact, on August 3rd, from 12 to 4, I believe. Um, I think that's the, yeah, it's 12 to 4. We are going to review our building improvement plans and the district improvement plan. And refine it to uh, incorporate the direction that we take in terms of reopening school. So uh, each school will be responsible to determine what, what staff, what students may need. Extra uh, support, and they would convey that information, they would handle as much of it as they could at the, at the building level. But of course, the district would cut, become involved, and the community would become involved in supporting whatever it may be. So yes, that is part of phase two planning. Uh, I've asked the cabinet. And myself, we're going to be putting a plan together in support of the school district plan, whatever that may be. And principals will be responsible for developing that phase two uh, support.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. The model will be blended online in person, PK-12, any questions there?
Okay. I would go back to phase one with a question.
Sure.
Knowing the, you know, the ruralness of Mason County, and so we might have um, personal hotspots that might. Help more areas get Wi-Fi access. Um, there might still be an area where that doesn't work, so I would have s-. Is there a plan that's, um, a family could still get packet material if they can't get online?
Brenda, do you want to respond to that, and Kelly?
Yes, there's a, there, we're working on a, is that Sandy?
Yes.
Yes, we're working on a plan for that. All of the materials that we have Sandy um, from K-12 can be printed. And so if we need to go to that model, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Um, in that model too, we'll wrap extra care around those families, whether we're contacting them daily by phone. Or whatever we can do to make sure that their, their students are still connected with us as much as we can.
Brenda, do you have anything to add? Thank you Kelly.
Um, all I would say is, in my thought, I'm thinking those might be some of the kids, if we can't get them access. And help them the way they need to be helped, maybe those are some that we bring into the schools, so.
Absolutely, that would definitely fit that category. Okay, let's continue on, PK-12 blended model. Schedule. And this is where we are now, I mean, this, it, it may deviate by the time we get to this point, this could change. But this is where, this is our thinking at this time. Students will attend school face-to-face on Monday and Tuesday, or Thursday and Friday. Wednesdays are online learning for all staff, for all, for all with staff. Having office hour, and staff will have uh, office hours, planning and online class meetings. So Wednesdays are online learning days for all with staff, having their office hours and so on. Uh, schedule would be, it could be like this, Monday and Tuesday in person and Wednesday through Friday online. Schedule be Monday through Wednesday online and Thursday and Friday in person. And again, I want to stress that depending on circumstances, this may be a completely different model. But this is where we are as of the 28th of July, in terms of phase two, in terms of a schedule for students and staff. The support for all students and families is the same as it is in phase one, that will continue on. And it would be robust uh, based on our experiences in phase one, and that. And that would carry over into phase two. Questions on that, please? Okay. Upon approval to reopen, this is face to face instruction. Upon approval to reopen, the school, students would receive at least two full days of in-person instruction, like we mentioned. Online learning, students will have at least three days of online learning each week. So you see, online learning is, is going to be around for a while in any phase that we go forward with. Even in the traditional model, phase three, online learning is part of our world at this time and it should be. In case of a school or district closure, students would temporarily move to 100% online learning and in-person instruction would resume upon clearance from health authorities. So you see, we have the flexibility within this plan to go forward or backward, depending on how you look at things. But we need to have that flexibility because we don't know where all this is going. But we need to be prepared for whatever happens and this will provide us with the time to prepare and to really finesse our system. Staff, staff, a role of Shelton School District staff, staff from the student school will provide in-person instruction and online learning. Staff will be accessible to support students and parents on a consistent schedule. Okay?
So I have a question about this, Alex. As we're talking about, especially with this blended model where we're moving from online to a blended and then potentially maybe to, God willing, 100% face to face. What curriculum are we using? I guess especially in the blended model. I'm clear with what we're doing when we're 100% online, but with, when kids are two days in school and three days online, are we still using the K-12 provided curriculum? Or will we be using district approved curriculum? And then teachers are going to need to come up with activities and, and assignments for students to do when they're at home? Sort of, what's that going to look like or have we thought through what that's going to look like yet?
I have an answer, but I, I would like for Kelly to respond first and then I can jump in. Very good question.
Yeah, it's really, it is a really good question. We're still in talks about this, whether we stick with the one and see it through until we transition fully back into, into in-person. I think that might be the way to go. I did check with K-12 today, we were talking about it. And they said that it's, it's fully possible to do that, to remain with, with the K-12 curriculum until you're back to school face to face. So that's probably what I will recommend. So that we're not moving kids back and forth and back and forth, Sally. I, I wouldn't feel really comfortable going back to a different curriculum completely until we were pretty secure in that we're back, we've got that vaccine, we're ready to go. That's, that's what I'll recommend, but we still have to have a few discussions with staff about that.
And, and quite honestly, Sally, we would have to sit down with our unions and have a conversation about the transition from phase one to phase two. We would work with our principals, of course, our assistant principals, our counselors, just to see where they're at, at that particular moment in time and to see what would work best for them and support our, our students. So you asked a very good question. Do we have a specific answer at this time? No, but it wouldn't take much to get to an answer, but we've got to involve our staff for sure. And our unions, of course.
I think Sally, too, the sooner that we have a decision on how we're going to start, then we can move into the other plans for consistency purpose. But I think everybody's really wrapped up right now in which way are we starting? So. It may be a clean break, it may not.
Sure, thank you, that makes sense.
We've got a little time here to think all those things through, depending on the model that we incorporate. Online learning, is that where we're at? I don't think we're there.
Our role as a parent and guardian.
Okay. Go, go back up again for a minute, please. Okay. Okay, I just want to, I, I want to read that again. Online learning, students will have at least three days of online learning each week. In case of a school or district closure, students would temporarily move to 100% online learning and in, and in-person instruction would resume upon clearance from health authorities. Okay. Now. Role of guard, parent and guardian, parent and guardian support is necessary for younger students during online learning sessions. But you know, parents have a tremendous responsibility in the education of their children. But we need to make that as realistic as possible, there's no question. And that situation exists at different levels for reasons that we all know about. But again, we will be there to support parents and families regardless of the circumstances involved. Students will work, this is courses, or any questions on, on that one? On the role of parent and guardian, any comments or questions from the board?
Does not appear so.
Okay, thank you. Courses, students will continue their coursework through the blended model. Okay? Food services, meals will be, will be available during the week while students are in school. Grab and go meals will be available on days that students are not in school. Or if there are special circumstances where we would have to adjust for certain families and students. Okay? Just transportation, district transportation will be provided and that, that is a complex process. That's not easy. And depending on funding and all of those things and how they determine the formula to appropriate transportation funds. And I've heard today from Superintendent Reichdahl that, that's a complex. And because if you've got just, well, I won't get into that, but it is a complex issue. Okay, health protocols. On face to face days, students will be screened prior to entering school facilities, of course. Staff will instruct students on health and safety protocols and ensure they are following state and health guidelines. All staff and students must wear face coverings and maintain social distancing. For more details, please see the Safety and Security Subcommittee Report at the end of this document, which I sent to you, to the board earlier today, this morning. And it's basically the work of Robert and Karen DeWitt, which is very, very thorough in terms of protocols and in terms of parameters that we must operate within in terms of safety and security in our schools. Special education, same situation, Jenny's right on top of that. Their staff is ready to go to continue their work. Specifically, design instruction for our students will continue. Okay? That's it. Any questions? Okay, let's go to.
On the special ed, did I hear someone say that in August, the IEPs will be reviewed?
Not all of them. We will get together with the staff and figure out which ones are our medically fragile kids first and be working on those to determine which kids can or cannot come in and what those services will look like. Part of the CARES money is intended to help with some of those IP meetings being early. The majority will probably take place in September, once we get going.
Okay.
Anything else, Sally, on that one?
No, it's just a big task.
Yes, it is.
It is.
About 750 of them or so.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to do our work. Okay, then phase three, this is 100% of our kids are back to school. And as I've said earlier, I don't think, folks, that we're ever going to get back to the same environment that we're used to. I think it's going to be different and, and rightly so, it should be different. A, a system that meets the individual needs and desires of our students through technology. You know, the COVID situation is very difficult for all of us. But there is a little bit of a silver lining. It's moved education, it's moved business, it's moved all of us to a different place. And so it will be interesting if we ever go back to phase three in the recent future here. It will be interesting to see what stays and what goes in terms of how we educate our, our children and our students. So anyway, the decision to move to phase one, two or three will be based on COVID data and support from our local health people and school board. Face to face, traditional model, whatever that's going to mean whenever that happens, that'll be PK-12. And pretty much everything else just transfers, well, does not exist in terms of the face to face model. It's business as usual, but I don't believe that's accurate. It won't be business as usual. It will not. And really, probably for good reason. And for the benefit of our staff and, and students. Special education, of course, continues on. So do you have a, a copy of my introductory statement, Kelly, that you can bring up?
Let me look, I'll be right back.
Okay. Well, anyway, until Kelly gets back with that, those are, that's our recommendation that we will be presenting to you. This is our best thinking at, at this time. And you know, you're the school board, I'm the superintendent, I can make a recommendation based on input I've received, based on the work of our subcommittees, based on community members that I've talked with. Is this perfect? No, it is not. But I think it's perfect for the time in terms of preserving the health and safety of our people. And again, it's a very flexible plan. We can roll into phase two and phase three quickly as things are determined. But I'd like to just read this for a minute, very quickly. Okay, can you make it a little bit bigger? There you go, thank you. I've written this as an introduction to this plan that, that we just reviewed and it will be, if it's approved, it'll be online along with a Subcommittee 51-page report tomorrow. But I, I indicate here, dear Shelton School District families and community, the district has been hard at work planning for the fall of 2020. This important task has been the focus of seven subcommittees comprised of over 200 staff and community members. The subcommittees have taken into account the complexity and uncertainty that currently exists at this time, with the understanding that the plan must be flexible and adjustable to any challenges that may arise in the future. And that's what we've been talking about. The health and safety of our students, families and staff have been and will continue to be the primary focus as we move forward. Based on current data trends and discussions with our local health jurisdiction, we have made the decision to start school 100% online in the fall. Through this plan, we will continue to be diligent to ensure equity, accountability, health and safety, and overall, meet the needs of students, families and staff. As with most efforts, we will not satisfy everyone, but I must say that our hearts and intent have been genuine in all respects. And we will continue to do whatever is necessary to provide the best educational environment for our students, family and staff. Thank you for your support and understanding during these unprecedented times. And that's basically what we've discussed here for the last couple hours in a nutshell. You know, this is a time for all of us to come together, to look for the strengths in one another. It's easy to, it will be easy to pick things apart, but we can't afford to do that, especially in these times of ever-changing situations that come about. We don't know how long we would be in any phase, quite frankly. But I believe we have the support and the plan to move in a fluid manner between phases if we have to. And that's the kind of plan that's, that you always want, is a plan that is not constant, that it's fluid, that it can move with confidence from one phase to another. And we, I believe strongly that we have that. Now, I must say, are we going to satisfy everybody? No, we're not. Are we going to have people that are critical of our decision? Yes, we are. We would be criticized, folks, and there's people out there probably listening to me, regardless of the direction that we would take, just like every other public school system in America. But we have brought forth to you a plan, a recommendation for you to consider. It's our best thinking at this time. I thank you for listening and participating and I thank the principals and staff, assistant principals and counselors and everybody that joined us this afternoon.
Thank you very much for that presentation and everybody's effort that went into it. And it is 5:45, are there other questions or comments from board members?
Hey Sandy, I just have one more question. I want to say quick question, but it may not be. So budget wise, with this plan, are, where are we at? Are we good? This is something that's very doable within the, the current budget with what the, the board has come up with, with Brenda has come up with and the board has, has agreed to so far.
Alex, would you like to speak or do you want to speak?
You can start.
Okay. I am very comfortable with 100% online, probably more so than the hybrid model, to be honest. We are still trying to find out from K-12 exactly, as you know, from teaching on an online, how we will be claiming those students. So Kelly is working with them on that, but I'm very comfortable with this model.
All right, thank you.
You know, I, I will say, Sally, very, very good question again. It will have, it will make a difference in the budget figures that we've been talking about in our budget study sessions. In some ways, it will give us more flexibility and other ways, it'll save us a little money. But in our next budget study session, which will be an open budget study session, we will bring forward as much information as possible in terms of the difference between online versus a hybrid model. And you'll be able to see it right there. There'll be estimates at this point, but they'll, they'll be close.
All right, any other questions or comments from board members?
Thank you for all of the hard work. I know it's been a lot of meetings and a lot of thinking and a lot of work and I appreciate everybody who's participated in that.
Thank you, Carrie. I've, I've been blessed to be working with an outstanding board and outstanding staff. It has not been easy. It's, it's every day, every single day, all of us working together to come up with the best possible way to bring our students back to school. We know that it's a different world out there and things can change. But that's why we've designed a recommendation that can move rather easily between the three.
It's very reminiscent of, you know, our preparations for graduation. We started out with, well, you know, if, if things go this way, this could be the plan. If things go this way, this could be the plan. We had, you know, multiple plans, but eventually you reach a point where you've got to pick the one to go forward with. And that's where we're at. We've had multiple plans on how we might be able to proceed. And now we're getting down to the wire and we have to pick one. So.
Yes, Sandy, that's a very good point. And if I might say very quickly, making a decision as soon as we can enables us to do exactly what I've projected at the very beginning, that we use the month of August to develop supports and to fine tune the model, whatever model that might be.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
So just for clarification, this will be, this is on our agenda and we're looking for approval of the plan as presented, is that correct?
That is correct, only if, if you feel it's, it's something you can support, of course.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Just a minor suggestion for clarity, so that people aren't confused between the phases. Is this a district phase or is this a state phase? Because the state calls their phases, phases.
Yeah.
And so you have phase two, but is it a district phase or is it a state phase?
Very good point, Sandy.
Maybe we need to refer to it as something other than a phase.
Well.
If I, if I may interject for just a quick moment, there's actually an email from a individual making exact. Making exactly that discussion. Wondering if it would be better to refer to it as a stage rather than a phase to avoid confusion with the stages and the phases.
I think that would be quite all right with everyone, I don't know if we can change that before the board meeting. In terms of what we're going to put online, but we can sure change it and I can see the reason why we would change it. Can we change it on the plan itself, Katie and Kelly?
Yeah, I can do it probably in like ten minutes.
Well, that sounds good. Go ahead and change.
Or we send it to the board.
What if it was A, B, C instead of one, two, three? Because you know, still people are just still thinking one, two and three when it comes to the state.
Uh, that's a good point too, a different numbering. I like that, so. Alrighty, it is about nine minutes before our next meeting. If there is nothing else, board member, everybody can take a few minutes to disconnect from this one and get prepared for the next one. So are there any other last minute comments or questions?
Sandy and the board, do you want me to go through the, the same exercise that we went through at the board meeting?
I think that would probably be very helpful for the public. You know, if we can.
We could speed it up.
Yeah, we might want to speed it up if we can.
I wonder if it'd be clearer to start with your recommendation and then bring in the committee reports. As explanation of the second phase or.
I was going to start, you know, in the, in the board meeting agenda, it says reopening of school plan. Myself and subcommittees and what, what I would recommend we do is exactly what you said. We would start with the plan, the recommended plan. And then I would end by saying that the subcommittee reports not only support foundationally. Our recommended plan, but any and all plans that we would implement over time. And that the fifty-one page document will be online tomorrow. And with hopefully the approved plan to initiate one hundred percent online learning. I could do it that way and that would speed things up tremendously.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, we're ready to adjourn?
Very good.
Can we take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all very much, we'll, we'll see you all in a few minutes. Did I have, how many ayes? Did I have a third one?
I heard two, we all said aye.
Okay, very good. Alrighty, we'll see you all shortly in the next meeting.
And then Kelly, can you be, and Kelly, can you be ready to screenshot the, the plan towards the end of the board meeting, please?
I totally will, Katie will send it to me and I'll have it ready. Do you want your introductory paragraph included?
Please.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you, thank you to everybody. Good meeting.